We have pledged to the flag, Dolores Rodri.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Strong. Stransky.
Yes.
Connie.
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez.
Yes, present. All right, our next order of business is public communication. The city council welcomes participation in its meetings. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person so that everyone has an opportunity to speak. And I've opened up, if you look in the upper right corner, if you're joining us online, there's a chat bar up there. If you'd like to speak to an item that's on the agenda, feel free to send a message there. Otherwise, I'll call on the callers that are on the phone. I'll give you an opportunity to speak after I call from the people who've entered in the chat bar. And I'd like to acknowledge, we have a speaker, Joanne Cicado, I believe, that would like to speak first. And so Dolores will keep time and notify each of you when your three minutes is up. You have the right to address the council on anything that is not on the agenda. And however, we cannot take, we cannot take action on the item. Go ahead and begin your time.
Thank you, Mayor Rodriguez and council members. My name is Joanne Cicado, and I'm the community engagement coordinator for Lake and Mendocino Counties for the NorCal for Health Project. We're a member organization of the Mendocino County Tobacco Prevention Coalition. Coalition members have recently reached out to the council members to offer information and answer any questions the council may have regarding adoption of a tobacco retail license, including offering local data surrounding youth vaping, the youth vaping epidemic and its impacts here in Willets. I'd like to just share some of that data with you tonight. What we know is that in a 2019 survey, 11% of Willets' 7th graders and 42% of Willets' 11th graders had tried vaping. That 11% of 7th graders jumped to 16% in 2021, so the trend is going up. From that same survey, we also know that 45% of Willets' 7th graders and 84% of Willets' 11th graders reported that it was fairly easy or very easy to obtain vape products. Just to note, the legal age for purchasing these products is 21. What we also know is that communities that adopt strong local tobacco retail licensing mechanisms with strategic components, such as flavor bans, retail restrictions near youth-friendly locations, and product placement and advertising considerations, are seeing results. For one example, Warville passed their local tobacco retail license in 2013. Their youth sales rates dropped from 22.6% to 0%. So we know that local tobacco retail licenses are public health best practices to curb youth exposure, initiation, and addiction. And I just thank you for this opportunity to share these insights and again, extend our offer of services for education and information and to answer any questions that you may have as a way to possibly help combat any potential misinformation that may be surfacing and circulating in the community. And with that, I'm complete. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have an additional speaker, Lucy Bartholomew.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Rodriguez and city council. I'm Lucy Bartholomew. I'm a public policy advocate for the Blue Zones Project in Mendocino County, which is a community well-being initiative working to make the healthy choice the easy choice. Like Joanne, I, our organization is represented on the Mendocino County Tobacco Prevention Coalition. But tonight, I actually want to speak from my place as a, as a Willets resident. I'm, I'm very proud to have lived in Willets for the past decade, and my husband and his family have lived in Willets for, for his whole life and for years before then. And some things that I really love about the culture of Willets includes, include the fierce independence and the self-sufficiency and how Willets folks really balk at, at big business and pride themselves on advocating for mom-and-pop shops. I, I love that Willets is ahead of the curve, from Marriott Health Initiatives, from eating organic, to biking for transportation, to using herbal medicine. This town was really a, is a community of healthy hippies, like long before that was cool, so something I really admire about it. And now we have the opportunity to eliminate synthetic flavored nicotine sales from our home. Excuse me, I just lost my place in my notes. I also, I love that this is a healthy hometown. As I mentioned, my husband grew up here, and I've been seeing so many of my husband's high school friends moving back to the area to raise their children, and I look forward to raising my own kids here someday. This is a great place to grow up, but if we learned that there were dangerous toys on the shelves of our local store, we wouldn't wait for the state or federal government to act. We would remove those from the shelves immediately. It's not in the culture of Willets to dissuade our big tobacco companies over the health of our own. And an updated tobacco retail license ordinance would be a legacy reflective of both the history and the future of the culture of Willets. So we really hope that you prioritize this piece of policy. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Let's see, I don't see anybody else that's listed in the chat bar on the line, but I do see Larry Olson with his hand up, so I'll turn it over to you, Larry.
Thanks, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. I, as far as the chat bar, I thought that was for items on the agenda, but as usual, somebody has to probably nudge me. We are asking again to be placed on your agenda to bring our tobacco retail license ordinance forward. There's been delays, there's been changes, and we realize the pandemic's in the midst of it, but we really need to move forward. And we, as far as moving forward is concerned, the Willets community is being very patient, and they're being very respectful, but they have a intention, and they want us to go forward. The, excuse me, the schools are asking for help, for help, for help to the, to the.
Sorry, Larry, we'll stop your time for just a moment. One of our callers does not have their line muted, and we can't hear your echo.
Okay, that's fine, I appreciate it.
Could you please mute your line, caller? Thank you, caller's muted their line. Go ahead, Larry, our apologies.
Oh, not at all. The schools are asking for your help, and again, there are parents who, as you all saw in the video that we shared with you before the weekend, are really not the arbiters of this because kids are kids, and they're going to go looking for an experiment, they're going to try things, and sometimes what goes on between kids is not even shared at home, as we all know, and all of you in the room have raised kids. The, the other part, though, that I, I believe that we really need to look at, and it was mentioned by each of, you know, Joanne and Lucy, is that health is wealth. You are all there, as you know, and as you're committed, to leading your city in a way that is toward its betterment. It's got to be a place where, as Lucy said, people want to come and raise their kids. It's not about tourism, it's about people who come there and decide that's where they want to plant themselves. And so in, in that regard, we urge you to go forward with this. Now, going forward is simply to approve a document which has been court-tested, is revenue-neutral in terms of, of activity for the city, this is calculatable, and the county tobacco program is prepared to help make this happen. We only need a chance to, to demonstrate, if you will, the things we've learned, as Joanne shared, about how the community in Willets is operating, the fact that kids are able to obtain these things when they see fit, and the machinery there to make it happen well is, is ready and there for you. So we're asking that you include us on the agenda, on the agenda as soon as possible. We've prepared a presentation that we think will make our case for the people in Willets, for the kids in Willets, and also for yourselves, as really holding up as the leaders of a safe and effective community where kids can grow up healthy. It shouldn't be that hard to do the right thing, and I thank you.
All right, thank you. I'll open up the public comment to callers that have called in. If you could state your name and let us know if you'd like to speak on items that are not on the agenda. Do we have a caller on the line that would like to speak to council on an item that is not on the agenda? Okay, having not heard confirmation, I'm. Councilmember Strong, are you wanting to speak to an item that is not on the agenda?
Yeah, I just want to ask if there is any scheduled or, you know, when this might come back to our agenda, because I know we've talked about it before.
Are you talking about from the public comment?
Yes, the, the question that three people have brought up in their public comment, and just wanted to ask in a question, do we have, no.
So, will, yes, council policy says that items are limited matters under the jurisdiction of the council, and if it's not posted on the agenda, we're not supposed to, we're not supposed to be discussing it. There's nothing to say that when you get to the end of the agenda, under your item number 11, city council announcements, comments, and reports, you could make a suggestion that that be put on the agenda, but at the, at this time, it's not, it's not the practice of, of councils to, to discuss items that are not on the agenda, because the, all public has the right to weigh in on agendized items.
But we have in the past, when somebody's raised a question about putting it on the agenda, we've usually talked about it right then, but if you don't want to do it, that's okay.
No, honestly, since, since I've been acting as mayor, we've been trying real hard to follow the rules and make sure that we, we don't discuss items that are outside the agenda. Okay, do we, I believe we went to callers, and there wasn't any, so having heard none additional, we'll close the public communication portion, and we'll move on to item number three, which is public matters. We have an update from our Mendocino County Third District Supervisor, John Hascheck. Welcome, John, and I'll turn it over to you.
All right, well, thank you, Mayor Rodriguez and city council and everyone in attendance. So I'm John Hascheck, Third District Supervisor. Mayor Rodriguez invited me to just talk about some of the issues, and Brian Bender also, thank you for this opportunity. And I really want to appreciate the people who just spoke on public comment, because I worked with them closely in getting the county to do a tobacco, a flavored tobacco ban, and it was very, I feel it's been successful and pretty much well-received. So, so hopefully, you know, what we're hearing from schools is, you know, that you can act on it too. So, with one of the big issues on the county right now is the, the tax proposal, and so I just wanted to talk about that a little bit. You know, right now, for the county tax, we're paying 5 eighths of a cent and for a sales tax. And that 5 eighths is because of Measure A, which is 1 eighth of a cent, and Measure B, which, Measure A is the library tax, and Measure B is the mental health act tax. And so that's, the Measure B is 4 eighths of a cent, so together, you're paying 5 eighths of a cent tax currently. In April, that 4 eighths of a cent for Measure B is going to go down to 1 eighth of a cent. And there's a proposal on the, that's going on the ballot in November, for that the people, the friends of the library, those groups have gotten enough signatures to get it on the ballot, it's going to be Proposition O. And that will be to increase that 1 eighth of a cent up to 1 quarter of a cent for the libraries, for the capital improvements and ongoing cost, and so they feel that that's what's needed to really maintain the libraries and the condition that we love them in. And so between the Measure O proposal, where the libraries going to 2 eighths of a cent, and Measure B, which would be at 1 eighth of a cent ongoing after this, that there's 2 eighths of a cent that we wanted to see if we could reallocate. There were certainly proposals to do more than that, but a couple of us, Supervisor Jody and I, said we needed to keep it the same, no more than what is currently being paid up as a sales tax. So anyway, the, the 1 quarter cent in reallocation would be, would generate about $4 million a year, and that would be used, 90% of it would be distributed amongst the fire districts. And so Little Lake would get some, and Brook Trails, and what would happen would be, it would be allocated according to the Prop 172 distribution that currently happens, and also a factor according to population. So I think Willets and Brook Trails would both be served well by that allocation. So that would be 90% of the 4 million, and the other 10% would go to countywide, like the Fire Safe Council or Resource Conservation Districts that are working on, you know, forest health, home hardening, chipper days, those kind of things, prescriptive burns, and so to make our community safer from, from climate change wildfires, all that. Okay, so that's the idea, is 90% for the fire districts, 10% for this home hardening, chipper days, all those kind of countywide programs. All right? And so, you know, at the end of this, if there's any questions, we're also working on this water extraction. It's been a huge issue of people sinking private wells and then selling the water, and the water gets shipped off in water trucks into the hills for mostly, you know, illegal cannabis grows. And so we proposed and the board passed, proposed ordinance that would deal with water extraction from private wells for commercial purposes. So if you're selling water from a private well, then this would be regulated, and also the hauling of water, there'd be some restrictions on it, no water hauling from 10:00 at night till 5:00 in the morning. So, but the board did, was, it passed at 4 to 1. It's going off to county council for legal review and analysis, and then it goes to the planning commission before it comes back to the board. One more thing I've been working on is the tree mortality issues that we're seeing. You know, when we drive from Willets to Ukiah, on the west side of the road, you know, we're just seeing thousands of trees dying. And when I drive through the county, I'm seeing that in other places throughout, throughout Mendocino County, and it's, I've been working with the supervisor from Lake County and one from Napa, that they both have these tree mortality task force there, and so we're trying to do it in Mendocino County. You know, and so Friday morning at 9 o'clock, we're having a meeting, if anyone's interested in attending that, you can send me an email at hascheckj@mendocinocounty.org, and I can get you an invite to it. It's going to be a Zoom meeting, but we're going to have some experts talking about tree mortality, you know, the impact to the county, you know, what we need to be thinking about as far as emergency preparation, and those kind of issues with this big die-off that we're having, and according to some studies, you know, we're just at the very beginning of it. And lastly, I'll say that with a couple of Councilwoman Strong, that we're, we're going to have a town hall meeting on August 4th, and that is going to be at 7:00 PM, so that's next Thursday, 7:00 PM, and they'll be, you know, it'll be on Zoom, so, so if you want to attend, I think that we'll have the Zoom link in the newspaper, and that's about it. So if there's any questions or anything about that review, I'm certainly willing to take them.
All right, I'll open it up for council members. Vice Mayor Connie.
Hi, Mr. Hascheck, thank you for the report. I'm wondering when you might be coming back to council.
What do you mean, back to council?
Well, I have a question for you, but I don't want to gotcha you tonight, so I want to give you a chance, next time you come to us, you can answer.
Oh.
I believe we, yeah, I believe we, we were talking to John about making this a monthly thing, where he comes to one of our two meetings upon monthly. Does that sound like a, something that's doable, Supervisor Hascheck?
Yeah, certainly. You know, I tend, I don't know.
So the next time you come, would you be willing to speak to the illegal dump site issues that we're having up in Brook Trails, particularly on Dogwood Terrace? Give us an update on what the county is doing to help address those. I've definitely been hearing about it from Willets residents who like to hike up in the Greenbelt, so if you could give us some kind of brief rundown about that the next time you visit, that would be fantastic.
Right, okay, certainly.
Thank you.
All right, are there any other council members that have any follow-up questions? Supervisor Hascheck, anybody from the public have a question? Okay, thank you for being here today.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
I got a little coughed, so.
All right, we have no enactment of ordinance since this evening, so we'll move on to our consent calendar. Before us, we have the following items, the city council minutes of June 22nd and June 27th. We also have a resolution ratifying extending for an additional 30 days the approval of the virtual city council commissions and committee meetings pursuant to AB 361. Does council have any questions or comments, and if not, I'll enter to you in a motion.
I will still move, Larry.
Vice Mayor Connie.
Thank you, Mayor Rodriguez. The last couple of times we voted to extend the resolution allowing for remote meetings, we skirted around the idea that it might be time to open them up. When will we talk about that again?
I, I believe that we are ready, and because it is an agendized item, we could go ahead and approve the minutes of the meeting and then have a discussion about item 5B.
Great, thank you.
Would you like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting?
I will. I'd like to approve minutes for June 22nd and June 27th.
I'll second it for Larry.
I heard a second, was that Larry?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Stransky. Do we have any members of the public that would like to address us on the minutes of the meetings? All right, I'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Strong. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Stransky.
Yes.
Connie.
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez.
Yes.
All right, so we'll open it up for discussion about item 5B, and I'm ready to return to in-person anytime. I think there was some question previously about restrictions that some council members wanted in place, and staff needing some direction, that if we wanted to return to in-person or willing to return to in-person, specifically what restrictions would we like to see in place so that we could do so? And I'll open it up to council. Vice Mayor Connie.
So, I've been one of the, one of the ones of council who's been reluctant to return to in-person meetings. I find this format to be very convenient. However, I understand that not everyone in our community has access, and it makes public participation more challenging. That being said, I have concerns about all senior-level staff and all council members being in a small space in our council chambers, and as COVID cases fluctuate, rise and fall in our community, it would be, I think, detrimental to our city if a number of council members and/or a number of staff all got sick at the same time. So I, if everybody else is ready to go to, to in-person meetings, I'm willing to get out of the way and say, let's go for it, but I, I do just really have those concerns that, you know, if we all get sick at the same time, we're going to be in hot water with a small staff, and it's a real concern. So anyway, that's my, that's my two cents, and I'm ready to go back if everyone else is too.
Councilmember Strong.
I have exactly the same feelings that Greg had just, just expressed, and so not only is that a relatively small room, and, and just the council members and the staff are already in fairly close quarters, but then if you have a bunch of public people there, and they, you know, don't necessarily want to choose to wear masks, I'm just, I guess, given that there are these surgeries still happening, you know, it's frustrating, I realize that, but I, I think caution is still advisable, so I guess I'm still in favor of meeting remotely.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Yeah, I guess my concern would be in the event that somebody's exposed, we have a way that I could promote in, or, you know, that's the one advantage, if I had the sniffles, I could still participate.
I think that, I think we ought to postpone it for a little while, and I'm really ready for it to come back to the council for everybody to be in one room, but I think this is a little early still, and COVID is still going its way, so I, I agree with that.
All right, I think I heard Councilmember Gonzalez state that he likes the idea of coming back, but he has some concerns about how you could meet remotely, should you feel that you've been potentially exposed, or maybe you even have any kind of flu symptoms and we would need an alternate plan? And then unfortunately, Larry, I couldn't make out much of what you said. Would you, Councilmember Stransky, would you restate?
I said that I think that I'm ready for it to come back, but I think it's still too soon. It's, it's time that, that we get back to facing each other and seeing each other, and, but I think it's still too soon, and the, and the, everything seems to be on the rise still, so I'm ready for, I'm willing to go where it is. Thank you very much.
Okay, I know that we're having some challenges trying to figure out how to do a hybrid, and I had some thoughts, what if we did something similar to where Dolores, you can see that she's using her screen to show that that callers, I don't know if there's a way that we could have callers just, multiple callers be able to have the ability to call in and, but just use the one screen. I also had a thought that if we all wore N95 masks during council Uh, I also had a thought that, uh, if we all wore N95 masks during council meetings and the only time you removed your mask was if you were the speaker. So if you were a speaker, then you would remove your, your mask temporarily. That's another thought. If there are concerns about returning to in-person, otherwise we'll continue remotely. Any other additional thoughts from council? Is there anybody, uh, from staff? Because this does affect staff as well. Do we have any staff members that have, uh, concerns that they would like to address? You're not required to, of course. This is a public meeting, but just giving you the opportunity.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
So we have looked at this a couple of times, uh, both internally. We have expressed, uh, our thoughts, uh, about potentially holding, uh, in-person meetings in council chambers. Can you read on? Um, I think, you know, with the, with the numbers we're seeing throughout the county and, and northern part of the state, I think mandatory mask wearing would be a requirement. We may also want to limit, uh, uh, I can be seen within the council chambers. Now, we can go across the hall into the community center and then we have problems with acoustics, uh, but we can space people out a little bit there too. Uh, hybrid systems are, you know, I'm hearing some good stories from other municipalities to operate them and some are not. It's actually, it's a big burden on staff because we need almost double the staff to operate meetings right now. We're fortunate to have Dolores, but we, we need a secondary person to run a hybrid, uh, system. So we would need to consider it. So I, you know, I, staff would like to see meetings to go back in person because, you know, that's the functionality of, um, council sessions. But also, like we said, we got numbers that are rising. Dr. Carr has expressed concerns. He's still recommending, you know, in public settings, um, to wear masks. And so then we would have to have a policy. We would have to adopt a policy for council meetings where mask wearing, um, and, and any other provision the council wants to see. And then we would have to implement that, um, at risk of excluding someone who was a participant.
Okay. So before us, we have the, uh, we have a, an item to extend the continuation of virtual meetings. If we're not going to extend virtual meetings, then we need to give direction, uh, to that fact. So we kind of need to come to a consensus here or, uh, a motion to approve the extension for an additional 30 days. Those are our options. Councilmember Strong?
I would move to extend the, the ability to do these remotely, the meetings.
All right. Thank you.
I would second that, Larry.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Anybody from the public want to address council on this matter? Looking in the chat bar to the right, I don't see any. Anybody on, on the telephone want to address us on this matter? Okay. We have, we have a motion on the floor and a second. So I'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Gonzalez? Councilmember Gonzalez?
He's having some technical issues, so he may not be able to respond.
Stransky?
Yes.
Connie?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes. And, uh, Vice Mayor Connie, would you like this to come up for discussion at the next meeting or in, or in 30 days?
I think 30 days is sufficient.
Okay. So I'll be thinking about alternatives as we hope to eventually move to in-person. All right. Moving on to our next order of business. Uh, monthly activity reports. There is a business license activity for June 2022 included in the packet. Uh, this evening, we have no commission agency or authority business. So we'll be moving on to item number eight, which is city manager reports and recommendation. The first item being, um, item 8A, six municipalities mutual aid agreement. And I'll turn it over to our city manager, Brian Bender.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. So the, uh, item 8A, uh, that is in your packet is a mutual aid agreement that was drafted on behalf of six municipalities incorporating across two separate counties. The four municipalities in Mendocino and our counterpart in Lake County. Uh, and this is an extension of, um, the dialogue and the meetings that the six of us, the four and the two and the four, four, uh, the four, the six of us meet on a bimonthly period and almost on a monthly basis as well. Uh, and we saw that, we recognized there was a need, uh, to have a mutual aid agreement. Uh, in the past, equipment has been exchanged, staff has been exchanged, uh, material, uh, both informally. And it's really good that as long as the managers are having the dialogue and, and working well together, it's even more importantly that at the staff level, uh, there's great connections at the staff and at program level between these municipalities. And they, and they have, understand what the needs are. Uh, if we, one of us has a specialized piece of equipment and we don't need it right now and they have a need that is, uh, pressing, usually we can facilitate that. This is an, uh, attempt to codify all those informal, uh, links that we have established both at the managerial level as well as the staff level. And it's also important when there is a disaster or emergency event, um, when, uh, there was some declaration declared either at the state or the federal level and aid is exchanged between the municipality. Basically, those reimbursement agencies are going to be looking forward or looking towards to see if there's some type of documentation in place that, um, formalized the process and has a means to track, uh, what was exchanged, the time, incentivizes, equipment hours, labor rates, uh, market rate for materials. The other important aspect in this is there's no obligation. If, if one of the municipalities, for any number of reasons, cannot, uh, respond to that request, uh, it's not held against them. Uh, if we, we may need equipment ourselves and we just cannot afford to release that. So I think it's, it's actually a good piece of, uh, policy to have among the six. It shows some solidarity among the six municipalities. Also, it shows that if there's a disaster, we can, uh, respond quickly to each other's needs. And then when there is the, the assessment period and the reimbursement, um, that is followed through with the other, um, outside external agencies that we have, this document in place.
Okay. We'll open it up to, uh, council. Do you have any, uh, questions, comments?
Yes, I have one. This is Larry.
Uh, I have Stransky.
Brian, um, so if we have, if we approve this and then we decide that the particular.
Dolores, can you see, can you move as the laptop is, the reception is bad?
Can you hear me better?
Correct. Got me, yes.
Okay. So I think I talked to you originally about it is I, I really wasn't very much for it. But if we have the liability to be able to decline what everybody is doing, then that would be okay. I think we could be able to do that. I'm really concerned about the water thing that, that happened last year. And, and, uh, it hasn't gone away yet, but, um, and I'm just really concerned about that. So other than that, I think everything else is pretty good. Thank you very much.
Larry, if I might clarify your, your statement. Your concern was in signing, original concern was in signing this mutual aid that there might be some, some feeling, some sense of restriction that we would have to go to the aid of others in giving away our water. When in fact, uh, city manager has assured us that anybody who signs this mutual aid agreement can decline for, you know, if it's not in the benefit of their, their city or they're unable to provide it. Is that correct?
That is correct. Thank you.
Okay. Just making sure we all understood you.
And, and just for analogy, it's not like the NATO mutual defense that one of the signings is, is attacked or something like that, that the all other signings have to respond or, you know, the, what led to World War I with everyone signing alliances. Uh, this is mutually exclusive. It responds to direct need. And if a municipality cannot, uh, among the six, then it's, 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 it's passed down the chain. So if, if Ukiah is looking for a piece of equipment and, um, Willetts cannot provide it, maybe Fort Bragg or maybe Lakeport. Um, and if we can't, then that's fine. We understand. There are times when we're, what we're trying to do is leverage the resources we have among relatively similar sized organizations and communities.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yeah. Coming from the law enforcement and mutual aid agreements are a common thing. And so I would support it. Just gives us, uh, a, a, if when you can and can't, you know, because that's how it works.
Okay. If I've, uh, had comment period for, uh, council members, would, uh, any council member like to, uh, put forward a motion?
Gonzalez would like to move.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
No second.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Connie. I'll put it out to the public now. Are there any members of the public that would like to address us on this mutual aid agreement? All right. Having heard none, we'll bring it back to council and call for the vote.
Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Connie?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes. All right. Thank you. Moving on, we have, uh, item 8B, groundwater and hard water technical memorandums composed by Lakel Associates. He'll be our speaker representing this vote.
I'm going to tee it off, Madam Mayor. Um, uh, I do know Rod Wilber, Wilber, the city engineer is present as well as Scott Herman, Public Works Director. Uh, and I'll, let me just fill in a little bit of, uh, the history with this, this item. Uh, over my last year, year and a half, uh, during my tenure in the city, I've heard a lot of comments regarding groundwater. And also as a resident, I have experienced it as well. Um, and, and, and when I get, basically when the council members politely ask me when we're going to fix the problem, I politely ask staff when we're going to fix the problem. Um, and, and this is, these technical memos are basically established in the baseline of the information we know of the situation. Uh, it kind of puts to rest some of the, the, the rumors that, you know, they're, they're, what the problem is. This is an attempt to structure what we have, what we know to date, the issues that we have, the problems that we need to look at. Um, there's also references, especially on the groundwater technical memo, to capital improvement projects, which is part of the recently adopted budget. It's in the, the document for, uh, for, uh, for staff and the city to cycle through and make improvements. The, the goal here is, is to present this, um, and, and let the council interact with staff. Uh, because going back researching it, I don't think we ever really had a good, at least from, you know, looking through past minutes, um, of council sessions where council had the opportunity to say, look, you know, what are, what are we doing with these, um, circumstances that are experiencing, that the community experiences? What can we do? Um, and here's an attempt for us to explain the situation at hand, some opportunities for, uh, correcting it. These are not, these are longstanding issues. They're going to take some time and resources dedicated to them to correct. Um, this is also an opportunity for us to show that through the capital improvements plan, we have, um, identified some of the areas that need repairs relatively within a short timeframe to start, to start addressing this. And, and also at the end of the discussion, if the council wants us to accelerate some of these re, uh, corrective measures, then we also need to hear that as well. Um, like I said, these are not problems that are going to go away easily. Uh, they took nearly a century or so to get here. And, you know, our unique landscape, uh, you know, compounds it. But I still want to note that, you know, the, the dedicated efforts of Scott Herman and, you know, a handful of staff, uh, the amount of services they provide, uh, to this community and also residents of the, of non-incorporated residents who are also benefiting from this investment we made. Uh, I just want to acknowledge that effort as well. So kind of laying that out, laying out the landscape, looking at what we want to accomplish tonight. Uh, I see Rod is ready to go, so I'm going to do the handoff to Rod. And there we go.
Uh, thank you, um, Brian. Appreciate it. Uh, Madam Mayor, uh, council members. Uh, Brian, he pretty much covered the whole, uh, the entire memo and that discussion there. But, um, but I'm very touched on the fact that this has been, uh, something that's built up in the distribution system over, over many decades. And, um, the bottom line is it's, it's sediment that is there that reacts to changes in, in, uh, flow conditions. A lot of times caused by, as it states in the, in the memo, uh, fire hydrant being opened or closed too quickly, a pipe breaks, uh, and the leak, the leak itself causes a change in the hydraulics, uh, upsetting that sediment buildup, dislodging it, and we get groundwater. Um, it is, uh, uh, it's somewhat of a challenge to, to completely address the situation. And it's ongoing maintenance issue. And we've talked about ways to step it up, the flushing, annual flushing is, uh, the most important component. And as we've discussed previously in previous meetings, uh, during, uh, times of drought, it's really difficult to use the two to three million gallons required for, for flushing and send it down the gutter when we're asking people to conserve water. So that's, that's some of the challenges faced most recently. But I think, um, we, with, um, some of the changes in the system and, uh, the renewed effort by, by Scott and Public Works Group and the, and the Water Department, um, I, 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 we look forward to mitigating and reducing the occurrence. I think is, is, is where we're starting. And over time, see a better, better situation within the distribution system. Uh, two ways we can do it all, another way to, to help address this is at the treatment side to reduce the amount of sediment that goes into, that makes its way into, into the water system. Uh, and the, the addition of the clarifier at the, at the surface water treatment plant during the upgrade in 2015 is, is, is helping. Uh, we've talked about adding, uh, granular activated carbon as a, as another, um, another treatment, uh, treatment component to, to address this upfront. And, um, the capital improvements to replace that aging steel pipe. There's, there's, there are several projects, uh, over the next five years, um, that we, we would be looking at hopefully making a market difference in, in, in the amount of sediment that's built up and some more focused, just more focused flushing efforts. Um, I think this provides, this, the purpose of the memo is to, to explain what has happened. Give us, give kind of an outline and overview. And as we move forward, we'll look to, uh, one, you know, proof is in the pudding. Where's the proof is in the water? Lack, lack of occurrences is, or the, the decrease in the number of occurrences is what we're, we're hoping, we're looking to achieve, not hoping we, we expect to. not hoping we expect to achieve. So with respect to the hard water, that's a little different situation. We don't have specific capital improvement projects lined up at this time. I think there's more research that needs to be done. It affects essentially the northern portion of the city more than the southern portion, just giving, given the location of the groundwater, that's the source. The groundwater supply, that's typical for groundwater. It's hard, it causes scaling. And in order to reduce that, the primary, I think the reverse osmosis treatment is, is the number one option. The issue associated with that is you lose 30% of your production, and it goes to waste. And it probably goes, what we've talked about, it would go directly into the wastewater treatment plant, assuming we can, we can accommodate that. And I think there's some, there are some logistics that would have to be figured out. But, you know, you're getting a small portion coming from the groundwater that, that creates issues at, like I said, I don't want to say a small part, but an isolated section of town. So, but I think there's, just to sum it up, there's more to come on that.
Okay, thank you. I think I'll open it up to council and see if they have any, any technical questions about the document. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Rod, or Scott, is running the groundwater, is there any part of town that's worse off than others, and is that, you're going to base your plan as far as, like, some upgrades?
Yeah, this is Scott.
There you go.
This is Scott, Public Works Director. You know, for the most part, it is widespread. We do see more groundwater in dead end areas and looping systems like we did on the brother subdivision to Willow Lane, little stuff like that when projects arise that we can do that. It does help the circulation in the buildup of the dead ends. But yeah, it's pretty much, you know, in the areas, you do get more common calls from the steel water lines areas, because carbuckles do break loose. Could be from road traffic, could be from a velocity change. But that'll usually stir it up in those, in those situations. They don't necessarily, the carbuckles don't build up on, on the C-900 or the plastic pipe or the AC pipe. It's not as common.
Thank you.
Any other council members? Vice Mayor Connie?
Hi, thank you. I really appreciate this series of memos, and I appreciate staff's attention to this concern. I know it's something that we've all brought to you over the years, and I know that it's hard to hear. We're proud of our water system and the efforts that have gone into it. We're proud of the staff who maintain the water system for us. But it continues to be a problem that frustrates the community. I'm happy to see the capital improvement plan personally. I think it's fair to say that the community members that I represent would like it to be a more aggressive capital improvement plan. They'd like more projects. They'd like more replacement of those steel mainlines. I know that's hard with the constraints that we face, but I do feel that I'm representing the people of Willets in saying they want more and they want it faster. I'm sorry, that's hard to hear, but I think that that's real.
I just like to respond to that. Yeah, and maybe not, not so much in a subtle way. This is my basically line in the sand that I want to provide to the council and to the public that, you know, it took me a little bit of time to get my head around what the extent of the problem is with groundwater and the conditions and the assessment of our infrastructure. From this point on, we're going to make a committed effort. I will be working with staff, getting their opinions, what we need to do. We're going to be doing a triage system, a triage session of our capital improvements plan early in the fall, just, you know, revisit it, make sure it's consistent and realistic, back to the funding that has been allocated through the budgeting process. And one of the things that Rod definitely emphasized is flushing. We're going to need to do that. We do now have, we do have the groundwater resources that we can utilize when necessary. We may start thinking about doing flushing episodes in those areas where Scott said that it's difficult, where sediment does collect in the lines. Maybe we don't need to wait every year or when this, you know, when we reservoirs have some capacity. Maybe we need to utilize the groundwater to reduce that problem that the residents experience. So that, I mean, basically, that's what we're trying to do. I've heard loud and clear the message that the council has expressed to me, and the instructions that you want to pass along, that basically this is an issue. It needs to be resolved to the best of our ability, and we will do that. It's not going to happen overnight. It's not going to, it's not cheap, but we'll do what we can, and we do now. Now we have some resources. We do have good staff that can look at these issues. We're coordinating with Rod on what is the best approach. And we, more importantly, we're flushing, we have groundwater, and are, we're looking at how we can utilize the enterprise ones more effectively to make those investments back into the infrastructure.
Thank you. Much appreciated.
All right, councilmember Stransky or Strong, do you have any comments?
No, I'm just like everybody else. I get stopped at the grocery store about the brown water, and that's, you know, I mean, that's just life in Willets, essentially. But I think the replacement of the steel pipe is a really good step forward also.
Yes, I agree, and I think it's really good that we are being public and transparent about the situation. So instead of people complaining and then never hearing back or not really understanding what it is we face and what we're doing about it, having this kind of public disclosure of what our situation is and the things that we're planning to do within our resources. And I agree, and I really appreciate Rod and Brian and Scott and everybody working on this and really paying attention to it so that we can be more responsive to the public. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Connie?
I wanted to make one other comment. I did hear from a homeowner who not too long ago was able to replace the pipes in their home. They live in an older home, like maybe 100-year-old house, as many of our houses in Willets are. And they found that they really did see a reduction in the amount of grit that was coming into their sinks and bathtub. I know in the past, Dusty has talked about possibilities for grants, and I don't know if that's through CDVG or something like that, that could help homeowners pay for infrastructure costs, particularly homeowners with lower incomes. And I wonder if that's something city staff can look into to see if there's any possibility of finding ways to help our homeowners make their own infrastructure upgrades that could help reduce this problem, at least in the homes. Just a thought.
I agree. I think that's a great suggestion. We worked with a consultant for a CDVG grant that we recently are using, and maybe that would be something that we could explore with them to seek out and potentially manage. So we'll put that in our capable city manager's hands to look into that and get back to council on, if that's the will of the council. Thank you for this technical report. And I'll open it up before I close this item. I'll open it up to the public. Is there anybody from the public that would like to address council or ask questions? It's the same policy. You have three minutes, and you can ask questions or give comments. All right, having heard none, I'm going to close item 8C's presentation, or I'm sorry, 8B's presentation. And we'll move on to item 8C. I'm going to turn it over to our Vice Mayor Greta Connie, because I have a property that is within the zone and would have a conflict of interest. And so I'll come back for department recommendations and turning it over to you.
Thank you. So item 8C is a look at adopting a resolution authorizing the installation of two-hour limit and no semi-truck parking signage on the south side of East Commercial Street between Humboldt and Madden Streets. And I believe City Manager Bender will discuss this item for us.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Connie. So in your packet, you will have the agenda summary, supporting resolution, and then a map exhibit that illustrates what we're looking at. So the proposal right now is the alternate traffic parking or parking management system that you find on the 100 block, the 200 block of East Commercial. The area that's in front of City Hall on the south side of East Commercial is approximately about 60 linear feet. The idea there is to place control signage that would, as noted, limit parking to two hours and no semi-truck parking. And one of the things that came up through internal discussion yesterday at a staff meeting was also to paint parking stalls, parallel parking stalls in these areas to help manage parking. So that's something that we'll look at to do as well. And then on the 200 block, we're looking at approximately 190 linear feet of a similar traffic control or parking standards, controls that would be implemented. And the reason we're looking to do this is severalfold. This is a highly traversed or traverse portion of the city's street network. We have several important civic buildings or facilities. We have the fire district, we have City Hall, we have the Justice Center, we have Snyder Park. And as you go further along east, we do have a child center, a child daycare center. And then you also have, further along, you have the skunk train that attracts movers and tourists, and they both park on both sides of the street, and they also cross Commercial. So what we're looking at is to reduce some of the parking to improve turning movements from the Humboldt intersection onto Commercial. We're also looking to improve sightlines for vehicles that are parked along the curb for pedestrians accessing these facilities that we described, and also, more importantly, for children and younger adults who access Snyder Park. And then just to have some orderly parking provisions for the tourists and people who are visiting the skunk train when they have overflow or large events.
Thank you. Open it up to council. It looks like Councilman Gonzalez has a question.
I guess what I'm going to suggest is not that we just, it's one thing to say semi-truck, but if you get a vehicle that's over six foot or something. That's why we've done this.
Jerry, we're losing the last part of your comment?
Okay, I'm just suggesting that be no vehicles over six foot as opposed to a semi-truck, unless that's the intent, is just semi-trucks, because if you've got a big van, that's not a semi-truck you park there. It's a light side.
I understand what the comments that we just expressed, and that's why when we had our staff meeting, and it was disclosed that painting parallel parking stalls would reduce that. I mean, basically, the requirement on the city code is that if there's a delineated parking area, your vehicle needs to sit within those boundaries. You can't overflow. So if we mark generously sized stalls, but if your vehicle will exceed the box, essentially, then that's illegal parking.
This is Larry. Next thing. I think that all of the parking lots that Willets has has all been signed with the amount of time that you can park in these places, but nobody ever checks it. There are people that park in our parking lots all day and all night, and I don't see anything happening about that. And I think we ought to either get rid of the signs or enforce them. That's my shot.
Thank you. It looks like Councilwoman Strong has a comment.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we're not, by restricting this, it seemed like a good idea to me, in that two-block area, that we're not just going to move the same problem another block farther down one way or the other. Because, you know, so if there's a need for controlling that kind of thing for many blocks, it may be just doing it piecemeal. But otherwise, I'd as an interim measure at least, and then see whether this works. And I also agree with Larry's comment that if we have a restriction, we should also enforce it.
Thank you. Just to clarify on Councilwoman Strong's point, it seems to me that we actually aren't going to be increasing the problem down the block because this area that we're looking at, the two-block, is the very high-traffic area around the municipal buildings. So I think that's really the intent of this, is to try to open up that spot, particularly with the flow now from the new fire station. Is that correct, City Manager Bender?
Yes, that's correct. This is really a first phase, first phase of looking at how we can accommodate the fire district and their movements when they enter or exit, more importantly, when they exit and roll out of their facility and onto Commercial. That is something we have talked about at our Traffic Safety Committee. We've been working on improvement signage, marking, potentially some lighting controls. But this is the first phase, just to improve and to grant improved availability of open space on the south side of Commercial.
Thank you.
That's fine with me, by the way.
Thank you.
I just want to say that, that's fine. And I just want us to look if it turns out that there's another place that these semis start parking, just to keep our eye.
Thank you. I don't want to put our police chief on the spot, but I'm wondering, I see him here. I'm wondering if Chief Lizaraga would like to say anything about the department's ability to actually enforce these signs if they were to be installed. Do you have any comment you'd like to make?
Yeah, they're completely enforceable and would be something that we could add to our, to our task list. The only thing that we would ask is that, and we work with Public Works on putting up the signs and everything, as far as making sure they're clearly visible, clearly marked, and cite the right either municipal code or vehicle code section in order for our people to cite them. But it is, it is something that we could do. And I also kind of wanted to make a comment to an earlier comment made that as far as the city parking lots, I can't really speak for daytime enforcement, but I know for overnight enforcement and things like that, we've been hitting those lots pretty good, pretty hard for the last, I would say, six to eight months. Whether it's citing them or if we have enough cause to tow them away from the parking lots, we've been able to do that. So, and we'll continue to do that as well. And just adding this two-block area for restricted parking is something that we can enforce and should be readily available to us because we're constantly coming, coming and going either to the Justice Center or to City Hall.
Thank you, Chief. Any other council members have comments before I open it up to the public? All right, seeing none, I'm going to open it to the public. It looks like Tamara Allenes is here and would like to comment.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Connie. Tamara Allenes, Willets resident. I live here in the neighborhood, and you'll see me driving several times a day and walking all over town. And I got to tell you, this is, this is a great idea because we have seen some impacts with pedestrians and it And it was mentioned by City Manager Bender about the skunk train and the tourists that are there. And I have seen a lot of close calls when there's this line-of-sight issue with some of these larger vehicles parked on the side of Commercial. So thank you very much for taking up this public safety issue. As far as Councilperson Strong's concern about moving down the block, I think, you know, like City Manager Bender said, I agree that that's a higher-traffic area, higher pedestrian, probably the impacts would be lower, but definitely appreciate the looking out for future impacts from this determination, whichever way you go this evening. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public interested in speaking on this topic? All right, seeing and hearing none, I will bring it back onto the dais. Councilwoman Gonzalez, do you have a comment?
I would just like to move staff recommendation.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Councilwoman?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution authorizing the installation of two-hour limit and no large-vehicle parking signage on the south side of East Commercial Street between Humboldt and Madden. Can we get a roll call? Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Conni?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Abstention.
Thank you for the discussion and the vote. And I'm going to turn it back over to Mayor Rodriguez.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Conni. We have the city manager's verbal report.
Yes, so real quickly, I just want to give an update to the general public on behalf of the council on the City Hall renovations. We are essentially in-house. We're in our location. We're in our offices. They're functioning. We're still trying to make the public space, finish that aspect of it. We still need to get our security grades for the counters, the service counter windows, and then the counters installed. We're still waiting to get that done. But we're fully operational. If any member of the public has a concern or wants to meet with a staff member, we're open, we're available, we can accommodate you. We're turning a corner, making these nice improvements. And I think the City Hall is really going to benefit from it. We're going to make it a prominent facility once we're all done. It's going out a little bit longer. We've been coordinating with the contractor, but we've been delayed with supply chain issues, availability of material. That's been slowing us up a little bit. But once again, it's a worthwhile effort, the efficiency of the buildings to serve the public and allow staff to do what they need to do to serve the public has increased tremendously. So I think that's good. And that was the end, the goal of the project as we started this literally a year ago, starting to explain this to the council, our intentions and the value. So yeah, we appreciate the patience of the public and the council as we work through this, but the light's at the end of the tunnel.
All right, thank you, City Manager Bender. We're going to move on to our department recommendations. These are possible action items. 9A is a discussion and proposed action awarding professional services contract to Plan West Partners aimed to update the general plan use element and to prepare a sphere of influence amendment. Our presenting staff member will be Community Development Director Dusty Dooley.
Thank you, Mayor Rodriguez. Good evening, Council. Dusty Dooley, Community Development Director for the City of Willett here. So yeah, that is the matter before you tonight. Staff is requesting council approval to enter into a professional services contract with the consulting group Plan West Partners. The updated, the general plan land use element as well as amendment to the city sphere of influence is a project that's a much larger undertaking than current city staff can handle alone and will require the assistance of consultants to complete. This is often true in much larger jurisdictions beyond our small community. On June 9th, the city issued a request for proposals, RSP, to solicit qualified consultants to assist the city with this project. As noted in the agenda summary, we received two proposals in response to the city RFP. The proposals are attached to the council packet there. And after reviewing both proposals and for reasons noted in the agenda summary, staff is recommending that council approve the prepared resolution authorizing our city manager to negotiate and enter into contracts with the preferred consulting group, Plan West Partners and their subconsultants for not to exceed an amount of $260,364. And also note right there that staff has secured grant funding totaling $260,364 to support this project. We do have a timeline based on the grant fund to complete the project by the end of September 2023. So for that reason and other, staff is anxious to get to work on this important. And I would say as a planning nerd, a very fun project, too. So certainly happy to discuss more about land use elements and the importance of sphere of influence and all that or otherwise answer any questions that the council might have. Thank you.
We're also eager to see the work take place. And we're pleased that there is a grant that's happening. And we know that this is an important step in meeting our goals of being able to increase our local housing stock. Are there any council members that have clarifying questions? All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Larry, I shall move.
Gonzalez, seconds.
All right, we have a motion and a second. I'll open it up to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak? All right, well, moving forward, I'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Strong?
Yes, I just wanted to comment that I'm so eager to see this moving ahead. It's way, you know, our land use element is so out of date. So this is going to be wonderful. And there will be lots of opportunities for public involvement as well.
Gonzalez?
Gonzalez, yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Conni?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes. All right, we're all excited to move forward on that item that was one of our goals that we set. Okay, moving forward, we have item 9C, the Mobile Vendor Ordinance Interpretation Update. There is no action sought this evening, rather a presentation from Community Development Director Dusty Dooley. As we do not currently have an ad hoc for mobile vending, Dusty Dooley will give an update on interpretation of the ordinance that we currently have at place.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So like you mentioned, no action is being requested of council tonight. Rather, the purpose of this item is to provide council with an overview of the city regulations governing peddlers. Peddlers is a little bit of an old-school term, more commonly referred today as mobile vendors, which does include activities such as food trucks. And certainly want to provide, you know, staff's interpretations of these city regulations. It's an update. It's, there's been some confusion, I think, at least since I started my career here at the city, specifically regarding the city code section 5.28.010, which limits the locations whereby a mobile vendor can operate. And I actually want to take a moment. This is in the agenda summary. But what that code section states is that it is unlawful for any person to sell or offer for sale any merchandise of any description from either stationary or portable stand or from vehicles... And I emphasize the word "upon", from vehicles upon either main or commercial streets or upon any side street within one-block distance from either main or commercial streets in the city. This ordinance was actually established... Or excuse me, this code section was established by ordinance in 1929. And this code section, you know, certainly does prohibit mobile vendors from parking upon these streets. But it does not in and of itself prohibit mobile vendors from operating on properties that front main or commercial streets. So that, I think, sort of becomes an important distinction and really is what led staff to want to provide this memo and update to council tonight. So, you know, I think where some of the confusion came from, the confusion being whether or not these mobile vendors could operate upon properties that front, you know, main and commercial streets or even some of these side streets. It goes back to some discussions that happened at both the Revide Ed Committee and city council level back in 2014. Again, this information is included in the council packets. But in 2014, the Revide Ed Committee held meetings regarding mobile vendors. My understanding, I was not... To not participate in those meetings was not part of the city staff at that time. But my understanding is that the discussions were primarily born from concerns regarding food trucks attempting to operate in the city. At the May 14, 2014 council meeting, and which was, and the discussion was continued to the May 28 council meeting, the staff presented recommendations that came from multiple meetings at the Revide Ed Committee level that recommended changes to city code pertaining to mobile vendors, including deletion of section 5.28.10, which I just read. It also offered up new language restricting mobile vendors from operating both along main and commercial streets or within 100 feet of main and commercial streets. And again, that was the May 2014 meeting, where council also directed staff to complete the recommended revisions to city code with a few minor modifications. The full recommendations of the Revide Ed Committee and subsequent council direction with those minor modifications are included in the council agenda packet. The memo that was presented by Revide Ed, the minutes of the meeting, that's where I'm getting the information from. And so you have that available to you as well. So I think this is where the confusion came from because staff is not aware that the council directives and modifications were brought back to council. And I think that's where there was some confusion of, hey, there's a rule that restricts mobile vendors from operating on properties that front these main and commercial streets. And then staff struggling because it doesn't say that in the code. And I think the mystery is solved in that that direction was provided by council. But unfortunately, it wasn't followed up back in 2014. So kind of moving forward from that point, I also outlined some additional city regulations that pertain to mobile vendors, including food trucks within the memorandum there. So you have section 17.66.070E that notes that these businesses, again, mobile vendors can operate in all zoning districts, but cannot be permitted for more than four non-consecutive seven-day periods in a calendar year. So while the code does allow you to operate on these properties that front main and commercial as well as elsewhere in the city, there is a time limitation that is also applicable to these types of businesses. Further, chapter 17.82 calls for the planning department, Community Development Department, to issue a zoning permit for mobile vendors. That's a permit we currently charge $50 for. And then finally, the memo attempts to identify a number of matters that staff would consider prior to issuing the zoning permit and subsequently a business license for a mobile vendor such as a food truck. So, you know, we would certainly ensure that, you know, that the food truck does not convert parking spaces that are otherwise required to support other onsite businesses. If they needed to do that, they would need to seek a variance and have that approved by the council. You know, we're going to look for, you know, basic traffic safety stuff, you know. Are we maintaining safe ingress and egress out of the property? On-site traffic circulation? Make sure we're not compromising emergency access. We're going to inspect your operation for fire safety purposes. We're certainly going to make sure you have approval from the property owner. We're going to request copies of the other applicable permits we know you need to have from, you know, county environmental health department, sometimes their quality, as well as the sheriff's office. You know, we're going to want to know that you're not located in existing easements, that you have safe setups for your electrical and your water source, that you have a wastewater disposal plan. And then kind of more of a catch-all, otherwise seek information to ensure that you're not causing a nuisance, whether it's lighting or maybe a generator, that you know, that you have a plan to clean up the site. And then finally, we would look to make sure that your vehicle's registered. So this was, these are all kind of examples more specific to a food truck because that seems to be the topic of most discussion there. But I just wanted to point out that, you know, even though we don't have a comprehensive ordinance for mobile vendors, we still have a permit process and we still are able to have a number of checks and balances based on existing code to ensure that these things are... These types of businesses are setting up in an appropriate way. So, you know, what I can tell you is if an application for a mobile vendor came in today, what, based on the information that I was sharing with you just now and is included in the memo, that peddlers or mobile vendors would be required to complete the zoning permit review process. They would need to obtain a city business license, and they would pay the city business license tax. They are permissible in all zoning districts subject to the standards that we discussed. And, yeah, I think I'll stop there. That was probably quite a bit to check just, so. Happy to answer questions, thank you.
Vice Mayor Conni?
Thank you, Dusty. I have to admit, I'm confused. So from my understanding, mobile vendors, let's just call them food trucks, aren't allowed on Main Street or Commercial or within, what was it, a block of Main Street or Commercial? But what you're saying now is that if there was a business, let's say Brown's Corner, who's got a large vacant space on their property and they invite a food truck to come and sit there, they can't because they're not on Main Street. They're on a property facing Main Street. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. And I would just add to that, subject to some of the checks and balances in the permit process that was identified. And you're correct in that that had been the direction that had been provided to previous mobile vendors up until recently. And that's why, you know, staff felt that it was important to bring this different interpretation to council's attention, as well as the community at large. And so again, I think the confusion was based on, you know, many, you know, well, I don't even need to get into that. I think that there was a misunderstanding that all those discussions that happened in 2014 and the direction that council had provided based on, in part on recommendations from the Revide Ed Committee, had become code and had become codified. And the reality is that that direction was never followed up and those code changes were not completed. And so we're still working off the location limitation that was established in 1929, which prohibits mobile vendors from operating upon the street rather than adjacent to it.
Okay, thank you. And I do appreciate the clarification. And I believe that there will be members of the public and members of the business community who will also appreciate this new interpretation. I guess my follow-up question is, and this might be a hard one for you because you weren't part of those Revide Ed recommendations to council in 2014. How can we... Are there any safeguards in place now? Or how can we ensure that any decisions made or recommendations prepared at committee level today will go forward and not lay fallow for eight years?
You know, I think you have a staff that's committed to following up on the direction of council. And a big difference in 2022 versus 2014 is the investment that the council made in, you know, the Community Development Department along with, you know, other departments at the city here. the city here. So we have a little bit more capacity to take on those challenges now. I think our budget is probably a little bit healthier, to where we can seek outside help to complete some of these efforts, if staff's not available to do it in a relatively timely fashion. So all I can really say, you know, Councilmember Connie, is that, you know, you have a dedicated staff, and, you know, we certainly would like to think that we wouldn't let something like that sit on the shelf for something like eight years.
Excellent answer. Thank you, Dusty. Really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yeah, I know that Mayor Rodriguez and I were an ad hoc committee more recently than 2014, and at that time, I had assumed that the 2014 recommended ordinance was in place, but it isn't. So that is interesting. And I know that there's a lot of strong feelings, you know, among brick-and-mortar business owners, and people that want to go into possible mobile vending, that affect what our policy might be going forward. I think it is worth looking at this again, because the position that, you know, that you are taking right now, Dusty, is based on a 1929 ordinance, and maybe we want to look at that again. The other part of it that does also concern me, there's the location, you know, and the location within the city and all of that. Right now, it is allowed in all zoning areas, which would include single-family homes, and I'm not sure we want, that we want that. But the other one that concerns me a little bit is this, you have up to four non-consecutive weeks that you could operate such a vending business. And if you are a food truck, and you want to kind of get known as, you're set up at this particular location, and people want to find you, and you have your supplies, and you've gone to a bit of expense to set the area up, and get your signage, and get your garbage cans and water, and, you know, going through all those hoops, and then you have to close down for a couple of weeks, and then you open again for a week, and then you close down, that seems really hardship for a mobile vendor. So I guess I really think that we should look again, not tonight, but at this current status of our ordinance, and see whether it's really what we want.
All right. Any other comments, questions of Dusty this evening?
All right. I think that when we did, I'm struggling a little bit, because when we did our goal setting, mobile vending wasn't something that we had identified as a goal, and we made a promise to ourselves and the community that we would try and stay on track with the goals, and not spread our staff out too thin on all these different little things. Mobile vending is important, and I personally feel like, going back to the 1929 meet, what was put in place then, kind of is in alignment with the general consensus of those who attended the ad hoc that Madge and I both served on. I know it's not the consensus of everyone there, because we didn't have, we did have some that weren't in agreement, but the majority appeared to be in agreement. So for that reason, I would like to see things stand as is, but to revisit this at a later session, any kind of changes, so that we stick true to the goals that we set forward for this year. How do you feel, what do you all feel about that?
See a thumbs up from Vice Mayor Connie Stransky? How do you feel about that? Are you okay with that?
I would, I would really like to revisit it sometime, whenever we can get to it. I said I would like to revisit it. I don't know when it would be convenient to do it, but I think this has been something in the community, because it was a hotbed a couple of weeks ago, or a month ago. Thank you.
I lost a part of what Larry just said. I didn't hear the part of...
I said, I think...
Could you repeat that, Larry?
I think we ought to revisit it, because about a month ago, or two months ago, it was a hot item in the community.
Gonzalez, I saw you, unmuted there for a second? Okay, he may be having some technical issues. I think at this point, we'll go ahead and hold off on appointing an ad hoc committee, and talk to City Manager a little bit more about where it might fall into our goal setting. And if you have any other concerns, I would say that the two council members addressed, maybe some additional concerns, maybe those could go through City Manager Bender. And if there's an additional need, we can put it on the agenda for a full conversation, and talk about where it might fall in line with our goals. Is that acceptable to the council?
Yes, I think so.
It's acceptable to me, but, yeah, so I agree that we don't have to act in urgency, we don't have to put it on the next agenda, or necessarily have an ad hoc committee, but I do think we should plan to revisit it at some point, because it's sort of like a scab that we keep scratching and opening up again. We need to be more clear, I think, in the future, but it can wait for a while.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to suggest that we can work with Community Development in a reasonable timeframe, we can at least bring this out a little further, and potentially bring some revisions of amended code to the city for consideration, council for consideration, and start the dialogue then. Is that what I'm hearing is what your intentions are, or what your expectations are?
Yeah, I think that consensus of, at least four of us, was to hold off, and I think even Madge is okay with, if I'm correct, Madge correct me if I'm not, in holding off for at least a short period of time, six months, Madge, before we, possibly before we revisit it, but certainly putting it on our radar to follow up on a potential amendment to the code. But we want to make it part of our priorities. We don't want to have our staff going off in many directions. It seems that the current interpretation of the code is sufficient for the moment. Is that correct?
I'm okay with it. It's not great, but it's, I don't want to, yeah, divide the staff and divert them from the priorities that they have right now on their plate. And I also just want to mention that all of these permits for such businesses are one year only, so anything we've granted this year will be reconsidered again in a year or so. If we, even when we do revisit it, we haven't locked ourselves into something.
I just want to, once again, disinject the conversation, that if this is a priority, or you think it's a concern among the business community and residents of the community, we have capacity, or we can find external capacity to explore this issue. So I don't want that to be a limiting factor in your concern, and how you want to direct us.
I appreciate that, City Manager Bender, but I think that, for me anyway, I feel that the interpretation is in line with what the consensus was from those who attended the ad hoc committee, so I feel comfortable not investing the time changing it at this time. That's my, that would be my preference. And I think from the thumbs up, that that seems to be the consensus of the group, but we can also open it up to the public, because I haven't done that, and maybe council will have additional thoughts then. So at this time, I'll open it up to the public, if there's any members of the public that would like to address us on the interpretation of the mobile vendor ordinance. Now would be your time.
Having heard none, we'll close that. We're not taking any action on this item this evening, and we'll move on to Item 9C, which is Vacant Commercial Building Registration Program Update. No action is being sought again on this item. And again, the presenting staff member will be Community Development Director Julie.
All right. Three in a row. One short of my record, though. I'm slacking. The council adopted the Vacant Commercial Property Registration and Property Maintenance Ordinance, which is city code Chapter 8.28. In part, you know, based on my understanding, it was to help activate, you know, especially the chronically vacant commercial buildings in the city, as well as help ensure that these vacant buildings do not pose a health or safety hazard to the community, or otherwise create a public nuisance. You know, I was the main author of the ordinance there, with good direction from the community and council. And I really felt like it was a difficult ordinance to wrap your head around, because it's a balancing act of trying to recognize private property rights, while also trying to introduce the community cause resulting from really what's only a handful of buildings with these prolonged vacancies that are at risk and becoming community hazards. But for other folks that are truly trying to fix up and lease or sell their commercial buildings, you know, this ordinance and this program can be useful in assisting those property owners with matching their vacant spaces with prospective tenants. So the purpose of this item is to update the council on the program that was created through that ordinance effort. In September 2021, staff took a survey of commercial structures that were understood to meet the definition of a vacant commercial building. And again, a vacant commercial building is defined in our code as a commercial, "The commercial building shall be vacant if greater than 50% of the commercial units within the building have been unoccupied for over 90 days." There are a few exceptions to that, so if you have an active building permit, and you're doing alterations or rehab, rehabilitation, that with the aim of making that space useful for a business to use, then we're not going to consider your building to be vacant by definition under that situation. Also, if, you know, hey, it's vacant, but, you know, you guys are processing a use permit for any type of business to go in there, that would also preclude us from defining you as a vacant commercial building. So we took that snapshot in 2021, and staff was aware of 11 vacant commercial structures on 10 properties that met this definition. All 10 property owners were contacted, of which eight have registered their buildings and paid the $100 registration fee. Some of the registration forms are incomplete, and two owners have yet to register their buildings, so we have sent additional notifications to those owners to either complete the registration form and provide the missing information, or in some cases, they still need to register the building. One of the important caveats that came out of that ordinance was a requirement that each building be inspected by the Building Division and Fire Department annually. Five of the eight registered buildings have been inspected. Of those five buildings, only two were found to be, well, of those five buildings, two were found to be in need of substantial repair, and only two of the 10 vacant buildings appear to be in move-in ready, or what's commonly referred to as turnkey condition. So I want to, you know, I think that's an important piece of information. At least for me, when we started down the road of creating this ordinance with a mission of activating these vacant commercial spaces, you know, my first thought was, well, it's, you know, we need to build up demand on the commercial side, and get people that want to lease out these spaces. As we were exploring further and writing the ordinance, and as well as the information that's coming from, you know, our initial results from the registration program, is it appears that the issue of the vacant commercial buildings has a lot more to do with the conditions of the spaces, rather than lack of demand from businesses. So, for instance, you know, like I mentioned, only two of the 10 vacant buildings are, could really be, you know, rented out, leased out, without, you know, some level of substantial repair to them. And then of those two, you know, one of them's not for lease or for sale, at least as far as staff's aware, and the other one's a quite a large building that has no onsite parking, and so that limits the types of businesses that could make use of that building. The other eight, you know, need, you know, some level of repair, and in some situations, you know, quite substantial repairs before they could, you know, before we could ever issue a building, a business license for any type of activity in there. So, you know, that appears to be the main issue that's holding, especially the chronically vacant, or long-standing vacant buildings from being used. So hopefully that's some good information, and provides a decent update to council, and certainly happy to answer any questions or provide clarification. And Davey Bowles is our building official, he's also on the line tonight. He may want to add to my introductions here, and he certainly is available to answer questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dusty. I'll let Vice Mayor Connie go first.
Thank you, Dusty, for this presentation. A question for you, wasn't part of the ordinance a fee structure that was developed to fine property owners who left their properties vacant and didn't show any action towards either actively trying to lease or sell their property?
Yes, your recollection is correct. So I mentioned that, you know, eight folks have registered their property and paid the $100 registration fee. If their building continues to remain vacant for a second year, that registration fee goes up to $200, the third year is $1,000, and the fourth year is $2,000, as well as any subsequent years. So those are the fees that were established in our fee schedule.
Okay. And then in your memo, you indicated that several of the building owners who, whose buildings were found to need significant repair, had been contacted, requesting them to complete those upgrades, I think you said within a year. Maybe you didn't say within a year, but I guess I was just wondering, what is the timeline for them to respond to that request for completing the repairs?
Yeah, two of the buildings have been notified to complete, to come in for a building permit and complete repairs, and I'll pass it over to our building official, Davey Bowles, to finish answering your question.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. Davey Bowles, building official, thanks for the question, Greta. Yeah, so one is pretty much non-responsive. We do have a current request that expires this week to get back to the building and do further inspections. The other one has been very responsive to the needs of their building. You know, our first goal is to get a baseline for these buildings, to basically establish public safety, that's what the Fire Department, and we want to go in there initially, to make sure there's, you know, not an immediate hazard to the public. So then we have established that, we have another inspection scheduled for next week. One property owner has deceased, so we are really struggling to find the responsible party for that property. Until it goes into probate, we have no real legal contact for that property. But we are moving forward, and we're going to be... But we are moving forward, and we're going to be applying consistent pressure to those properties that do need repairs and bring them up to basically reciting the Health and Safety Code and the Public Nuisance Codes for those properties. We did have one inspection, we didn't even need to write a letter. We just walked in there and said, hey, this, this, and then they give, we'll come and get a permit. And they came and got a roofing permit following week. So for the most part, everyone's been fairly responsive. There's been a handful of people that have been needing a little prodding, you know, the last wave of people we sent out notice a violation, so they're in violation of our ordinance, the vacant building ordinance. So those two people that are not registered, we sent those letters out. I expect to get a response from one of them here shortly. And the other property is the property where we have no known owner. So those are the two that aren't registered. So I think ultimately this, so far, has been a success. I know it's been a slow start, but we're getting a baseline on these buildings, getting to know the players. Now we have local contacts, you know, we'll start following up on some of the smaller portions of their ordinance, you know, like getting their street front windows cleaned out of all the old advertising, all their old business stuff, and really start applying pressure to make them start taking care of these businesses. And hopefully that helps spur them in their endeavor to, you know, either actively lease them out, you know, lower their price, or be a little more energetic about getting these properties out of their hands or selling them somewhere for sale, you know. And if there's no pressure to fix their building or take care of it, you know, that doesn't, they just won't do it. So I believe applying the pressure and sending letters is having effect, and I think we are, overall, we're getting a good response from the majority of the people that are decent landlords and decent owners. You know, some are just going to be obstinate, we're just going to have to force that to the very end. But overall, I think it's been fairly successful.
Thank you so much. And I just wanted to thank Dusty, you and Davey both for continuing with this. It's been a long time coming, and some of you may know that I sat for many years on the REBYD committee as a private citizen before I was on council, and it's just really great to see this program actually taking off and being applied. So I really appreciate the efforts. Yeah, thanks.
So anyone have any other questions for me?
Scott?
Yes, I guess I'm just concerned with the folks that aren't responsive. There's fortunately not too many, but if they're really, you know, not registering, not making improvements that are necessary for health and safety, what ultimately do we, do we take them to court or what? Because if, you know, if we don't enforce, then the nudging might not be as effective. But I'm really happy we're doing the nudging and the encouraging part of it. That's great, and it's having some positive effect. But there are those cases where people are just not responding. What do we do?
Excellent question. Thank you. Yes, ultimately, you know, we can only write so many letters. And so when we reach the end of our letter-writing campaign, people fail to respond within the timeframes we give them to, you know, make the corrections needed. Yes, the answer is, you know, we would take that to the court system and basically move forward in that direction.
They did like an abatement of a nuisance? Sort of the same process?
Yes, correct. That's, yeah, would be one way, basically have the court either grant the city the ability to abate the nuisance or hire someone who could abate a nuisance. I'm sorry, Madam, I couldn't hear any of that.
The abatement of nuisance is one thing, and then maybe putting a lien against the property value, but that doesn't take effect until they sell, I guess. So maybe if Jim Lance has some comment about?
Yeah, the most drastic remedy that the city could impose on a non-compliant owner is to go to court to seek a receiver, have a receiver be appointed who basically takes over the possession of the building and operates the building or has it fixed to the point that it's no longer a nuisance. And that's a complicated problem. The City of Ukiah pursued that with the Palace Hotel there near the courthouse. It was a very long, difficult process, and we've been in touch with the Ukiah City Attorney Dave Rapport and with other attorneys that Mr. Rapport hired, who are specialists in the area and who assisted the City of Ukiah in their efforts. And basically, what they do is they first get the inspection warrant from the court and go through the building and photograph all of the derelict conditions. And so we get the current evidence of the problems and then apply to the court for the appointment of a receiver, someone who's qualified to act in that capacity based upon this evidence that we have, declarations prepared by the code enforcement officer, all the attempts to be made to get voluntary cooperation, and they failed to do so. So we had to get some inspection warrant, and here's the evidence we have before you, Your Honor. And the court hopefully would approve the appointment and put that receiver in place. And then the code allows for a loan, the receiver can apply for a loan that has super priority over all of the other encumbrances that are on the property, that we would stand in first place on that security against the building and have sufficient funds to operate and fix up the building and ultimately sell it and recoup our costs. And so that's the ultimate, but rather expensive and complicated process with the property owner who does not cooperate.
All right. Thank you for hearing council's concerns and the community's concerns and moving forward with a plan. We know there's a few more businesses out there that may need to be added to the list. If somebody knows of a vacant building that hasn't been addressed, do they just report those to you, Davey? You've got the glamorous job of code enforcement.
Very glamorous. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, so we are going to continue yearly inspections. So annually, basically, we're going to start in September. We started in September last year. In September, we're going to do an annual inspection again. And if any other business falls into that category, so we had a kind of a line of sand, hey, you, as of this day, we did the vacant building inspections, you got on the list. In that time, if your building became vacant, when we do our annual inspection, you are now on the list, then we will, you know, send out the letters to have you register, and you will be on the list. And that's, you know, that's going to be an ongoing theme with this. Hopefully, we don't have businesses that stay vacant longer than 90 days, but it is going to happen. And that'll be the process. Basically, every year, we'll do a canvas of the commercial buildings, and if you qualify for the vacant building ordinance, you'll get your letter, you get registration, do your inspections, and move forward. Hopefully, as this program moves forward, we'll have less and less of that in the future years.
All right. Thank you for your time and energy on this matter. Are there any members of the public that would like to address us on this before we move on? All right, having heard none, I'm going to move on to item 10. We're going to begin our monthly department report, hearing first from Kathy Warhead about airport and pool.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no further reports this evening. We do have a meeting tomorrow night, and we'll have more to report on after that.
Vice Mayor Connie?
I think that was my question. Is that your quarterly tenant meeting that was rescheduled?
Correct, it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Community Development?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This is Dusty. In the update from the, or the report from Community Development, it was noted that the planning directors throughout the county, including myself, have been meeting to discuss matters especially relevant to housing in our respective communities. And our regional planning team will be hosting a meeting in Ukiah August 25th to showcase some of our current efforts and to spur a conversation about supporting housing production and exploring various strategies to recognize our regional housing goals. And East jurisdiction, including the City of Willis here, is requesting two members from the council to attend the August 25th meeting. And so hoping to identify two council members that would be interested in attending that meeting. I don't have a time established yet other than I know it is in the morning. So my best guess at this point is you're probably looking at something like from, you know, 9:00 to noon on August 25th, which is a Thursday. So you don't need to get back to me right now at this meeting, but I did want to make sure the council was aware of that invitation. Thank you. And then also, I think Davey might have had something to say, too.
Thank you, Dusty. Yeah, real quick, it was asked, did we discuss some vegetation abatement as far as code enforcement's concerned and how that was going? We have pretty good compliance this year with vegetation abatement. It was a little slow start, but 90% of the people we've contacted have complied. We hit the regular offenders and then also any properties that the community brings to our attention, we address. So there's a handful of them I have to drive through and see if they've taken care of their issues, but for the most part, people have. You know, we had some complaints from the people over in North Burke area. It's, you know, the property is actually outside of our city jurisdiction. We had those people voluntarily comply, even though we have no authority over them. So we do have people that are voluntarily doing work we ask them to, so it's nice. But yeah, it's a little slow start next year. You know, if it's similar weather, we have this, you know, type of season, we'll try to get started a couple of weeks earlier, just so we do not have, we have this period where, you know, the grass gets brown and it's frantic. So we're going to try to avoid that next year by hitting it a little earlier. We have this, you know, layer of calm before the community really feels the fire threat. And so we don't have that peak of anxiety for them. But yeah, overall, we have pretty good compliance, and please note that we do have online code enforcement requests now. So it's very simple. It takes, you know, you can do it under a minute. So if any community member has any property they're concerned with, please direct them to fill out that code enforcement. You know, we can't fix it if we don't know about it. And it's been a good tool so far. We've had about a dozen people use it. Some people started, we had to clarify because it's getting just city in general complaints, not directly code enforcement, so we kind of clarified that website a little bit, saying it's only code enforcement. But please direct the public to use that. It's a great tool. We get that instantly, and we can respond really quickly to it. So thank you.
Thank you. Community Development, moving on to engineering.
Yeah, this is Scott. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Just a couple of updates on behalf of engineering. The PG Need Project is completed and as well as the restoration. They're moving the Baker tanks out this week. So there'll be no more traffic control in that area until the CCC camp starts. I think that'll be minimal traffic control as they approach into our right-of-way. The Blosser Lane project is, right now, ahead of schedule, looking good. Completed the concrete today, the stamped concrete is done. The first side of paving was completed today as well. The plan for the rest of the week will be the other side. It's in two lifts, two and a half inches. So the east side will be completed tomorrow on paving. And then Friday, they will do the whole section, both sides. And for the closure, it's a hard closure tomorrow and Friday, as we've been struggling with the public trying to get into the establishments. The Sherwood Food Group was grateful enough to open up their back road off of Cropley to get their people in. We accommodated the school district on the south end Monday and Tuesday so they could get to the district office. The plan going forward, probably this weekend, will be closed through traffic, but you can get to Robert Drive and to the school from either end. And next week, they plan on drilling the holes for the trees. So we'll have limited traffic control there, if not closures. And we'll post updates as we're informed on the timeline. And if you have any questions on either of those, feel free to ask.
All right, looks like we have none. Thank you very much. Oh, Vice Mayor Connie has a question?
Oh, I just wanted to make a comment. Andrea sent me a couple of pictures of Blosser. I hadn't seen it for a couple of weeks. It looks fantastic, so just wanted to, once again, congratulate everyone in the engineering department and in Public Works. Job well done, long time coming, and looks fantastic.
Thank you. I will pass that on.
All right, Chief Lazaraka from the Police Department?
Hi, good evening, everybody. I don't really have a whole lot more to report than what's on the report that we submitted. You will note that the calls for service from June of this year to June of last year is still a pretty noticeable decrease this year. I don't really have an explanation for it, other than I know that we had a few more people last year around that time, and then making, or may have generated a few more of these calls for that. But other than that, we're still, we're still feeling a good number of calls per month and addressing them as best we can. We've got a few people, as you can tell in background, so I'm hoping that they will be concluded within the next two to three weeks. And that's for one of our dispatch positions, a CSO position, and a vacant police sergeant position. So if we can get those people through and get them on board, it will help our staff, our current staff tremendously as far as workload and continued overtime shifts, which we're hoping to cut back on as soon as we can. One item that's not on the report that came in afterward is the, we got a report back from the Department of Justice regarding our RIPA entries, or facial identity profiling entries that we were all mandated to be on as of January 1st. Looks like our total number of stops reported totaled year-to-date 1,117. And one thing I'm particularly proud of is our people, out of those 1,117, only three errors were noted by the Department of Justice. And errors all seem to be the same, having to do with custodial arrest without a warrant, missing, putting in the proper code on three of those reports. So very encouraged by the way our staff has taken to this task and the Veritone Act. Uh, and, uh, the Veritone app that we are utilizing is working out very well for our people and letting them do it in a minimum amount of time, uh, so that they can get to the, uh, uh, to their other tasks. So, um, that's all I have unless you have any questions for me.
Thank you. That was very informative. Any questions or comments? Looks like none. Thank you, Chief. Public Works?
Good evening, Mayor Rodriguez and council members. Uh, Ken O'Shea for Public Works Maintenance. I have nothing further to report this evening outside of my, uh, earlier submittal, but I'm definitely available for questions or comments.
Doesn't look like we have any. All right. Thank you for all the work in your department. Uh, what about utilities?
Yeah, just, uh, just one, um, uh, change for the positive. Um, the, on the reservoir levels, actually Centennial is at, uh, full capacity, slightly still in over. Um, there was a discrepancy in the, in the STEM guide read versus the top of the flashboard. So, um, it actually, it gained us three, three percent. So we're currently at 93% of, uh, full capacity in both reservoirs.
That's good news.
And, and if you have any, uh, go ahead.
Hi, Scott.
Sorry.
I just wanted to make a comment. Um, we've had a couple of visitors lately, um, from elsewhere in California and they were, um, surprised to see green lawns in Willets and wondered why we weren't doing a better job of water conservation. And they were blown away when I told them, um, what a good position Willets was in, um, and how well our water system was being managed. Um, they actually said that I shouldn't say that out loud because it would encourage too many Californians to come here. So just wanted to give you that feedback that, um, feeling, feeling pretty grateful for the tremendous, um, capacity and, and job that our, our water staff does to maintain our, our water supplies here in Willets.
Thank you.
Benda?
That's our pride and joy.
You should have asked them if they're housing investors because if so, we want them.
If they're developers?
Yeah. Investors, developers, we'll take them all. All right, Councilmember Strong?
Uh, yes, I have a question, but I, I thought I would probably wait until, um, we have the report from the Water Committee, if, if Jerry's gonna cover that, because I have a question about, um, clarity and interpretation of the operational use policy for the groundwater. Uh, but I'd, I'd rather do that in the context of the committee report.
All right. Scott, if you have nothing further to report, I'll go ahead and move on to City Council. Now it's big communications and reports.
Yes, I'm good. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. All right, uh, we'll begin with, uh, Vice Mary Connie.
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
All right, I'm on the telephone. Is that, is that working out or not?
You've got an echo, but we can hear you, Jerry.
Okay, um, I, I have, uh, LAFCO is not gonna meet for August and, uh, League of Cities, uh, is going to meet at the, uh, end of August. And then there's the League of Cities Conference in September. And then, uh, should I give the Water Waste Water Committee report now?
Yes, please. Larry appears to have stepped out, so if you could give us a complete report, because I don't, I don't see him in the room.
Okay. So the Water Waste Water Committee ma- met on July 19th and received a briefing, uh, from, uh, on the groundwater program from, uh, City Engineer and Staff, Scott. So Scott, if I missed something, you can chime in. The committee heard the program is operating in compliance with the operational use plan approved by the council on April 13th. Staff emphasized the facility is working within design parameters and, uh, that during the months of May and June, it produced approximately six million gallons each month without any glitches. Uh, let's see here. Uh, staff explained that, uh, production ceased at the end of June and that, uh, uh, groundwater, the Elias well, recovered nearly four feet.
Did you get a cramp in your leg?
Yeah. And, uh, well, it's got filled in and, and then, um, you know, it's the, uh, facility is functioning without any problems and within the scope of the operational use plan, uh, forming as intended. And I think, Scott, um, trying to remember if we talked about this or not, that, um, I, you want to study this more and maybe come back to us? Is that what I'm kind of hearing? Or did I hear that? I'm not sure if I chatted with you offline there at the meeting there, so.
No, that's, that's correct. We, we, we established that in the, in the, um, operational use plan that we would, uh, give you a full report, council a full report in, uh, May of next year. And that, that would give us a year of historical data. Uh, you know, obviously every year may change, um, given, given the need. Um, but that, that's, that's what we're headed towards is to give you guys a full report in May of 2023 per the operations plan.
So from the committee aspect, everything seems to be working as, uh, we, uh, as in the plan. So we didn't see the sense in bringing it back at the moment, so. Uh, and again, uh, the other aspect, there were members of the public there that asked questions and, uh, asked for information that, uh, Steve or Scott or Rod was gonna provide. And, uh, uh, that's what I got. So, and Larry, did, did you think anything else that I missed?
No, everything, you did a really good job. Thank you.
All right. Okay, I'm gonna mute now.
All right. So we heard the presentation about what took place at the committee level. Madge, do you have a question about the committee report?
Well, it's really, um, about the, um, the operational use plan. Uh, when I saw it, uh, after our April 13th, um, approval, and then a month or two later, I got a copy of it. And it, it confuses me. Uh, it's, there's an internal difference of, uh, exactly what is meant in the section that's allowable circumstances for use is one section that we really paid a lot of attention to on April 13th. And then there's the use guidelines that follow that, which is different. And I'm not sure, I think it is subject to different interpretations. I've had conversations with, uh, Jerry and also with Brian and to some extent with Scott. Um, and it seems like even within the staff, there's slightly different ways to interpret what the council meant on April 13th when we adopted it. Um, and as a wordsmith, um, person professionally, I, I find the document to be a little unclear. You know, exactly like what, what is meant by the eight million gallon average monthly use?
I think...
That plus, plus, uh, emergency, yeah.
Well, I think, I think that this topic...
Shall I clarify?
This topic came before the, the committee and the committee reviewed it and the committee is reporting out. So I, I want to be careful that we're not addressing something that's not on the agenda because the agenda item is the, the committee's report. So really, the, the topic has to be in line with UF concerns over the report itself. If there's any confusions or questions over the document, uh, that seems appropriate, that that should be a conversation that's had with city manager. But I don't think that this is the place to debate a, a prior decision that was made. I, I believe that was something that the committee just laid in on and, and, uh, reviewed. Is that correct, City Manager Bender?
Yes, I mean, the, the council has standing committees and the Water Waste Water Committee is assigned to, you know, monitor infrastructure relating to those programs. And the, the committee convened on July 19th and basically spent nearly 40 minutes, 45 minutes just talking about the groundwater facility and, and its implementation through the plan. Um, got good updates from Scott and Rod. And the, at the end of the session, the council, the community committee was, uh, in agreement that everything was running as the staff was directed by the city council through the adoption of that operations plan.
So what I'm asking for is to have, um, a clarification of what the direction from the city council is to staff. Because when I read the, this, you know, the operational use plan that was, um, based on the April 13th action of the council, the direction I don't think is clear. And I think it's a very important issue to me and I think to others. And I know that there were people at the committee, uh, the Water and Waste Water Committee that raised these questions and they don't feel clarity about it either. So, um, and obviously we're not gonna try to resolve that or even have a full discussion tonight, but I would like to request that that, um, that the council revisit clarifying what the direction to staff is at a future meeting, uh, because I, I feel like it's not clear the way it is now.
Okay, it's a little bit outside the scope of the report, but, um, we can entertain it. Is there, are there other members of council that would like to see the clarification on what council voted on? I believe that there were, uh, three of us that voted yes. So it's my understanding that procedure is that one of the three that voted yes would have to state that we were unclear on what we voted for. So are any of, any of the three...
Madge, there's, uh, the, basically the city code only allows that within immediate meeting. Um, it, as noted, was April 13th. So we're, um, three months along, uh, approaching fourth. So you, you really don't have that window of opportunity to, um, have a member who voted as a majority in favor of the motion to bring it back as, uh, as sought after by, uh, Member Strong.
And City Attorney Lex?
My friend, Jim? Uh, yes, the cities, uh, has a manual procedure that they adopted in, uh, 2017, I think. And, um, for a, a motion to reconsider or motion to cha- change or challenge the vote or to rescind action that was taken has to occur at the meeting of that, that action was taken or the next meeting by a member who voted with the majority. And we also adopted this, uh, uh, these Rosenberg's Rules of Order that are attached to our, our procedure manual. And it explains that because it explains why a motion for reconsideration is to be made by that limited group and so swiftly because of the need for finality of decisions. And if a, if a member who voted with the minority would be allowed to challenge action that was taken, there could be repeated, there could be repeated requests by members of the minority. So that's a, that's a universally, I believe, accepted rule of, uh, procedure that, uh, only those who voted with the majority and only at the meeting or the next meeting may move to reconsider or, or, um, rescind or challenge the vote.
Strong?
Could I just, yeah, um, subsequent to April 13th, and I think it was at least a month later, so it was already too late to even do this procedurally. This is a policy. It's not, uh, an ordinance. It's, and, um, and I think several council members might recall that the discussion on April 13th and the actual wording of the motion were a little bit, um, unclear at the time. And so I didn't see what the staff wrote until later. And I, so I'm not asking for a reconsideration of the vote. I'm asking for a, a look at whether this policy, um, correctly, it conveys what the intent of the majority that voted for it, including, you know, those who didn't vote for it. Is it really clear what our instruction to staff is? And I don't think it is. Uh, and I'm a little frustrated that, um, you know, I, I still wanna, um, I'm not trying to rescind the action. It was voted on, about three votes, yes. But it was not clear to me at the time. And it's definitely not clear after the fact what the policy is that the staff are getting from the council. So I, I would really appreciate it if we could have a focused discussion at a future meeting on that subject. And, um, that's what I'm requesting. And if it doesn't happen, I, I won't be happy, but that's okay.
Is there a desire of this council to, uh, revisit this matter? All right, having heard none, sorry, Madge, we've all been on that end and, uh, it can be frustrating, but the will of the council, uh, ultimately is what decides, uh, policy for the city. Um, well, let's see. Councilmember Stransky, you, do you have anything to report from your committees?
I only, I only had the one, which was the wastewater and water. That's all.
And Councilmember Strong?
Jerry gave that report.
Thank you.
The, um, Mencina Solid Waste Management Authority had a, a meeting that was, um, postponed or canceled. It hasn't been rescheduled yet. I think they're having, they're working, um, at the staff level and with a little ad hoc committee to try to, to figure out a transition to, um, what amounts to having most of the duties be performed by a private company under the direction of Ensoa. Um, and the, you know, the legwork hasn't been done yet, so they canceled the meeting. Uh, I'm expecting there will be one relatively soon. Um, EDFC did meet and one of the interesting things that came out of that was that there will be, um, a, a wrapping up of the, uh, private investment or the, yeah, the investment that was made in the, um, Mencina Wool Company. There were also a couple of fairly large loans that were approved. The loan portfolio is, uh, is really going gangbusters and, uh, EDFC is really proud of how many jobs we are retaining and creating by, um, loaning out this money. And our loan, um, our general manager, who's also the loan officer, is really very successful at vetting these loans and getting good compliance. And we have, I think it's 0.6% portfolio at risk. In other words, um, everybody's paying back their money and, and these businesses are pretty much thriving. So we're really proud of what's going on at EDFC. Um, I think they will be wanting to make a presentation to the council at some point in the near future.
Well, that's it here.
For me.
All right, thank you. Um, I don't have anything. I had an OTA meeting today, but it was just routine business. Let's see, do we have anything for good and welfare? You've always got good welfare, Madge. Anything, anything good happening?
I just wanted to repeat the announcement that John Hascheck made that on, uh, Thursday, August 4th, a week from tomorrow, uh, we have a Zoom town hall. And it's always been really nice for people to have one-to-one dialogue with John Hascheck. They can ask him questions. They can, you know, tell him their opinion of things that, uh, the county should be doing. And, um, so I was really glad that he reported here, but I think it's really nice to have this available to the public, too. So if anyone's interested in that August 4th Zoom meeting, uh, they can get ahold of me and I'll send them the link.
All right. It's at that time of the evening and we're going to adjourn to closed session. I have, uh, the time of 9:02. Let's meet at, uh, 9:10. And in closed session, we will be confering with legal counsel pursuant to government code 54956.9, existing litigation, Alexis Blaylaw versus the City of Willets. Um, and we'll come and report back if there is any reportable action. I'll see you all at a... is any reportable action. I'll see you all in about seven minutes in closed session. Thank you, everyone.